Good evening. The July 16, 2018 meeting of the Ananorona County Council is now in session. You're invited to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Walker will lead the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bow your heads. Lord and heavenly Father, we're thankful for this evening. It's time to get together to discuss the business of Ananorona County. I pray you might give us guidance and wisdom in our decisions this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening once again. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be with you. I will ask the Madam Secretary to please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to introduce here and vote for a resolutions numbers 2718 and 2918?
So move, Mr. Chair. Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we call the roll.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to introduce here and vote on resolutions number 2718 and 2918 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced.
Resolution number 27, resolution appointing a county auditor. Resolution number 2918, resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Joanna D. Dickinson, CPA/CEP, as an expert in public accounting to assist with certain matters relating to public accounting, contractual auditing, and to assist in leadership transition in the county auditor's office.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you then please read the title of Resolution 2718?
Resolution number 2718, resolution appointing a county auditor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I just want to make just a brief explanation. This resolution is a resolution to appoint Phyllis Clancy as our new auditor. That was something that we did plan to do this evening and we are going to do. Following that, the resolution 2918 is a resolution to, we found it necessary through a certain set of circumstances to hire Ms. Jody Dickinson as an independent consultant for a brief period of time, ending July 31st. And so that's why we have the two resolutions. So let me, is there any questions or any discussion among the council? Let me open the public hearing on Resolution 2718. If anyone wishes to come forward and testify on Resolution 2718, seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2718. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2718.
Resolution number 2718, resolution appointing a county auditor.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 2718.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution number 2718 is adopted.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2918.
Resolution number 2918, resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Joanna D. Dickinson, CPA/CEP, as an expert in public accounting to assist in certain matters related to public accounting, contractual auditing, and to assist in leadership transition in the county auditor's office.
Thank you. Any questions? Is, oh.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
So before the public, actually, I'll withhold my remarks after the public testimony. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll now, then.
Mr. Trumpauer. A quick question. On the agenda, it has you introducing this by the request of the county executive, which I thought was odd. Is this by you as the chairman?
This is by Mr. Peruka as the chairman. That's a mistake on the agenda, unfortunately.
Okay. I'm glad we got that on the public record then. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good catch. Way to go. Thank you. All right. So we will then open the public hearing on Resolution 2918. If anyone who wishes to speak on 2918, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2918. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2918.
Resolution number 2918, resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Joanna D. Dickinson, CPA/CEP, as an expert in public accounting to assist in certain matters related to public accounting, contractual auditing, and to assist in leadership transition in the county auditor's office.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair. Over the last couple of weeks, it's sad that we get to this point on this particular resolution. I'm certainly supportive of, just put that out there from the beginning. But I must make my public sort of frustration known. You know, the fact that we have to vote on this resolution breaks my heart because this is why the last resolution asking that the county attorney have input from the county council is so important, in my opinion. Regardless of the facts of how this thing occurred, I believe that the actions by the county attorney certainly should have, or personnel, whoever it is, that led to this, it should have been our decision, the county council, to actually relinquish the services of the county auditor, not the administration, not the county attorney, not personnel, ours because this person works for us. And the fact that somebody outside of the legislative branch prevented us from making that decision really frustrates me. And the fact that we got to bring back the auditor or Jody as a contractor is frustrating. I know we've got kids in here, so I'm glad we have kids because I probably would have used a different language. But I hope going forward, the county attorney or personnel, whoever made that decision, to block our auditor from coming into this facility, the decision should have been ours to make, not the administration. And I think that crossed the line and why I'm so frustrated. And I'm glad that we're going to bring Jody back on for a few weeks to help with this transition, but it was not her decision to make. It was ours. It was ours.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, then please call the roll on Resolution 2918.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution number 2918 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I believe we had one person sign up. Latisha Hicks. Would you come forward, ma'am?
I didn't sign up. You didn't sign up, I guess.
You don't know who that is?
Yeah, who did.
That's Mr. Sinclair, correct?
Thank you.
There you go. Everybody knows Mrs. He's like Ms. Julie Johnson.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Hicks, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Latika Hicks. I live in Crofton. I want to take this time to express my appreciation to the county council members for your service. As a candidate in the Board of Education District 7 race and a mother with children in the public school system, I appreciate the passing of the FY-19 budget and that it included the additional classroom teachers, behavioral health positions, the positions to open the Carrie Whedon Early Education Center in South County, the employee step increases, and the much-needed construction projects at Tyler Heights, Edgewater, and Richard Henry Lee Elementary Schools. I'm disappointed that we were still short the number of teachers needed to include the requests for English-language instructors, none of which were funded. Also, I want to acknowledge the following outgoing council members individually for their exceptional work. Councilman Trumbauer, thank you for your leadership and diligence. I understand that you have taken a much-needed break, but I look forward to seeing your name on the ballot in the near future. Councilman Smith, you have been a great public servant, and I know that you will continue to do good work for our community. And finally, my council member for District 7, Councilmember Walker, I also believe that you will continue to work hard for our community. In an article in today's Capital Gazette, they refer to you, Mr. Walker, as a, quote, "go his own way Republican, just as willing to work with Democrats as his own party members," end quote. That's commendable. As a nonpartisan candidate, this is something I applaud and would hope that other elected officials and candidates will follow suit. While partisan politics has its place, I believe that far too often it gets in the way of civility and our public officials' ability to make sound decisions in the best interest of the public that they serve. As a friend said to me today, regardless of who we are, where we live, what race we identify with, or our political affiliation, we are all in this together. I hope that becomes everyone's priority and commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Appreciate it very much. That actually completes our sign-up sheet. So anybody who has not signed up who would like to speak, please come down at this time.
Yes, sir. I'm Harry Sinclair, 1170 Jeffrey Drive, that's in Crofton, MD. I returned from Virginia. I went to Virginia because it wasn't very crowded, and I heard you guys fixed everything up here and, you know, they've got all the infrastructure required. So I returned. Fort Meade is still a disaster, and Route 3 is worse than it was than when I left, okay? And I have four things here to share with you. There's an enclave that's going on at the Crofton Gates, okay, that supposedly is in the works. I think Phil Haggard is going to talk with the county executive reference that. There's also an assisted-living place going in next to what they used to call Dirty Shirts or Wash's Grove for everybody who doesn't remember Dirty Shirts. And there's also a strip mall going in by the Nighthawk Golf Course. Also up at Anderson's Corner, which is the intersection of 175 and Route 3, on one side where Anderson's Corner was, there's a Wawa there, which is great. I mean, the place is packed along with the car wash and the 10-minute oil change. But right across the street from the Wawa, they're putting in a Royal Farms. Pardon the way I'm getting my throat. I don't know. Maybe I'm not feeling well. And this is all on Route 3. It's on a two-lane road. I'm sorry. It's two lanes north, two lanes south. The rest of Route 3 is mostly three lanes, and that helps the traffic a little bit more. But here it is, is that it's been like that for 40 years. Now, I know it's not a county problem. It's a state problem, okay? But I don't know if the county puts it on a very high priority list. I know that that area there from St. Stevens Chapel Road, as I've been told, is in a priority funding area. Anyhow, it's a complete disaster, and I'm going back to Virginia because nobody liked me up here anyhow.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Thanks for that update on your travel plans.
(laughing).
Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. You know that I've been talking to you about my concerns about racism and how racism hurts everybody, that when one group gangs up on another group, everybody suffers. And you know, I've spoken about some other issues. And I wasn't, you know, I don't really like to talk about my own problems, but I got my own problems again. I filed an appeal of a decision, you know, from the county hearing officer, and I'm back to having people, you know, I'm back to having vandalism to my property. And it's really intimidating. It's really disturbing. It contributes to sleepless nights and worry. And, you know, and there's physical, you know, consequences. I grinded my teeth. I broke another tooth. Except it turned out it didn't really break it. But at any rate, you know, I went to the, anyway. I think that we've got a problem that we, as a county, need to address, or a group of problems. You're aware of the issues of stalking and repetitive, you know, it's not just annoyance, and it's not name-calling. It's much more serious stuff. And especially the longer term it gets, the deeper and the more profound it is. And I hope that we can develop a greater sensitivity because we saw, you know, what happened with a really long-term case that got out of control. And, you know, I've talked to you before about how serious stalking is. And I hope that, you know, maybe you'll revisit the statutes and revisit some of the things that we can do, you know, to protect everybody, not just me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ma'am?
Yes, I am Reverend Marguerite Morris, and I'm told I have an item on the agenda that I cannot address the name of. So because we did not understand processes tonight, we simply want to respectfully ask you that when you come back to that point to vote tonight, that you please consider the written comments and written testimonies that have been submitted. We respectfully ask that you please look at them, review them before you vote because those persons really believe enough to submit that. And that's all I'd like to say without mentioning the agenda number. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Thank you. My name is CJ Musaw, and I live at 3884 Ponder Drive, Edgewater, Maryland. Thank you. 21037. I'm also here to hear a final vote on something else on the agenda. But I did get something today I wasn't going to speak on, but I just, certain things, you know, about how the executive office runs just really make me disgruntled. So I got something in the mail this past week, and it's information about the money that I owe the county for my tax bill. And I get this every year. Anyone that has a mortgage here does. Two pages of this pamphlet, of this 1, 2, 3, 4, what is it? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8-page pamphlet here go to material that really looks to me like it's campaign material. And I'd like to know, there's two pages in this pamphlet that my tax dollars have gone to paying for that are all about the great job that our county executive is doing. There's nothing in this about the county as a whole or the rest of the executive branch. So why are my tax dollars going to pay for this campaign material? Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. That will complete the invitation to audience. It is now closed. Is there any item that any council member would like to place on the agenda? It's my understanding the administration is withdrawing Resolution 2118. May I have a motion to partial reading of any bill resolution or minutes constitutes a reading of the whole?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 2, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruka at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Trumbauer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 2, 2018?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of July 2, 2018 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 7218, an ordinance concerning capital budget and program athletic stadium improvements, additional appropriations, security upgrades, fund transfer, school construction fund. Bill number 7318, an ordinance concerning approval of the amended and restated lease of county-owned property to Piney Ice LLC. Bill number 7418, an ordinance concerning zoning, plasma centers, state-licensed medical clinics, and transitional housing. Bill number 7518, an ordinance concerning public safety, animal control, impoundment of animals. Bill number 7618, an ordinance concerning real property taxes, tax credits to veterans. Bill number 7718, an ordinance concerning zoning, conditional uses, licensed dispensaries gurus and processors of medical cannabis, special exception uses, licensed dispensaries of medical cannabis. Bill number 7818, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, roads, multimodal transportation. Bill number 7918, an ordinance concerning boards, commissions, and similar bodies. Bill number 8018, an ordinance concerning public ethics. Bill number 8118, an ordinance concerning pensions, employees' retirement plan, refund of accumulated contributions, election to defer retirement date. Bill number 8218, an ordinance concerning pensions, employees' retirement plan, transferred service, accumulated contributions. Bill number 8318, an ordinance concerning pensions, employees' retirement plan, joint survivor options, unmarried minor child. Bill number 8418, an emergency ordinance concerning zoning, general provisions, licensed premises of licensed dispensaries of medical cannabis.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 2818, resolution recommending school sizes for Ananorona County public schools. Resolution number 3018, resolution recognizing and declaring the humanity of preborn children and urging the citizens of Ananorona County to encourage the humane treatment of all human beings, including preborn children, as well as to promote and defend the dignity of all human life.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on bills number 6218, 5818, and 6618 out of order?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we call the roll.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on bill numbers 6218, 5818, and 6618 out of order is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read the title of bill number 6218 as amended?
Bill number 6218 is amended, an ordinance concerning the issue and sale and delivery of Ananorona County, Maryland, general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Marsick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bernie Marsick in the county executive's office with me at the table. Karen McQuaid from finance, Lorraine Tony from finance, Bill Hen, our outside legal counsel, bond counsel, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This is our bond bill, our annual bond bill. We would ask, you know, we've discussed it the last meetings. We would ask that you pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. Sir, any questions? If not, then we will open the public hearing on bill number 6218. Does anybody have a sign up here? I don't see, I don't think we have anybody signed up. But if anybody would like to testify on bill number 6218, please come forward at this time.
(inaudible) You don't have to go. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I really don't delve into all the details of the budget, but I have grave concerns about the never-ending increase. Never is there a reduction. And I simply do not see our society producing the kinds of jobs that produce the kind of income that, you know, today's teenagers will be able to support when they're in their 20s and their 30s and their 40s, and those in their 40s and 50s, and so on. You know, how are they going to deal with the incredible rise in the cost of living and the stable or declining wages? You know, I remember there was a big deal about a federal report called "A Nation at Risk" about how the schools were failing. And then came the report that said, "Oh, we do not need home ec and shop, you know, and, you know, trade education because after all, we're going to be a service economy, and that's where the good jobs are going to be." Part of the reason, we know, part of the reason there is so much violence in certain communities is we have so many people who are either unemployed or underemployed. And the incomes that they earn are insufficient, and/or you see these people who are exhausted working two jobs. We have the disintegration of the families that contribute to all of these additional problems. And I really ask you to start cutting back where you can cut. You know I'm going to be here among the first saying we need good education. So I'm not telling you that it's easy to find where to cut, but I believe it's very important that we start reducing the burden on the public.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We will now, we'll now close the public hearing on bill 6218 as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 6218 as amended.
Bill number 6218, an ordinance concerning the issue and sale and delivery of Ananorona County, Maryland, general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes.
Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill 6218 as amended.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. Bill number 6218 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of bill 5818 as amended.
Bill number 5818 is amended, an ordinance concerning planning and development, master plan for land preservation, parks, and recreation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marsick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bernie Marsick in the county executive's office. With me at the table, Rick Anthony from Wreckin' Parks, Christine Neider from the Office of Law, and Ben Sussman, who's our outside consultant for this bill. We discussed this at length at the last council meeting. This is the 2017 master plan for land preservation, parks, and recreation. We would ask you to pass this bill tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? If not, we will then open the public hearing on bill number 5818. I don't see anybody sign up. If anybody would like to testify on bill 5818, please come down at this time. Good evening again, Mr. Sinclair.
Again, Harry Sinclair, 1170 Jeffrey Drive, Crofton, MD. I'm tardy in looking at the plan, but it upsets me quite a bit that there's nothing in the plan at all about the Naval Academy Dairy Farm, which I think we paid $240,000 a year to them to rent the place. And it's like a 10-year-old plan, and the county hasn't done anything out there. The other part of this is that I got a list from the PAB or the advisory board to the Wreck people. There's nobody on there from West County, which I don't understand. In other words, everybody that's on that advisory board is from somewhere like East County, North County, or Davisonville, which is South County, as I recall. But it's kind of like, wait a minute. One, the dairy farm's in West County. Two, the Odenton Town Center plan is a pretty big thing that's going on. I don't think we have a park in West County. I'm not sure. I know we've got a couple little basketball courts and tennis courts, but I don't think there's a park out there yet. And I'm just concerned with the list of the advisory, which starts with Warren Duckett. Okay, I guess he's the attorney. And everybody on that list is from somewhere else other than West County, but it's not any different than the transportation plan that was set up 10 years ago, or maybe not that long ago. It had nobody from West County and had two people from Edgewater on a transportation plan. And I don't think Edgewater has that much traffic compared to Fort Meade, West County, and that area. So I don't think that part of the county is being integrated, or, I don't know, brought in to be conferred with. I didn't even know that they were conducting interviews with people, and I've looked at the plan, and there's nothing about the Naval Academy in there.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair and Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have a lot of, you know, concerns about parks and recreation. When my kids were younger, if there was a chance of a ballpark, man, we knew about it. We were all supposed to get out there and testify and say, "We really wanted this." And that's good. All the citizens need to be expressing their concerns and their ideas. But conversely, when you look at what happens when, you know, when we have these zoning laws and a developer is coming in and he's going to build 2,000 units, it seems to me that among the other requirements are that he has to provide a variety of facilities. You know, the markup, you know, and, you know, the profit margins are sufficient, and it's essential. In the development and design of good communities, you have to have, you have to have community gathering places, and there are all different kinds of them. And it's not just athletic events or, you know, ball fields. And it's not just athletic events or, you know, ball fields. And we're really -- we've got a real problem in this county with the loss of our trees. We've had an urban -- or we've had forested areas, and they're really being denuded. And, you know, I'm not old enough. I remember when West Street was a tree-lined street, and of course, that's long gone. I remember when Reva Road was a gravel road, you know, and a few other things. You know, and I understand times change, but we need to protect the whole environment. Just a simple, you know, have you noticed how many businesses we have that are storage units? That's because in the design of the housing that's provided, there's not adequate storage. And everybody has spring clothes and winter clothes and linens and sports equipment, and that needs to be a requirement within the bills.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll now close the public hearing on bill 5818. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 5818 as amended.
Bill number 5818 is amended in an ordinance concerning planning and development, master plan for land preservation, parks, and recreation.
Any discussion? There's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment removes language referencing acquisition of 50 acres for a west-area athletic complex and clarifies that a park and athletic complex at the Naval Academy Dairy Farm is to be developed subject to a continued or extended lease of the farm.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Pruski. May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to my service on this council, this very body voted for a 30-year lease for the Navy Dairy Farm, and the intention was to lease that property, obviously, to build gardens and walkways, which obviously was testified to. In addition, there was a group called the Hammond Connection Committee, which was a public body, which vetted, obviously, that process. They have not met since. And also, some of the neighbors have contacted me in regards to the purchase of the property. There's a big difference between purchasing and leasing land. Once you purchase land, obviously, that's set for life. Once you lease land, obviously, there's conditions that this council would vote upon. The concern that I brought up at the last meeting is the original plan called for four ball fields. Mr. Sinclair can remember this, that it was four ball fields next to the Gambles Athletic Club in the original plans, and then it went to 12, which abut many neighbors' properties. And many people, when I knocked on their door on California Ave and also along the dairy farm, had no idea this was going on and were asking when there was public input or meetings. So the reason for this amendment, obviously, is to continue our lease. I believe the purchase, if the NEPA study is made public, the Hammond's Connection Committee is brought forward, and the Department of the Navy actually agrees to selling the property, we could certainly have that conversation. So that is the intention of the amendment. Again, I believe in greater public input and initiatives, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. We're opposed to this amendment for a few reasons. First, we had shared this with the office of law after Mr. Pruski shared it with us, and they've said that council is not allowed to amend this plan under section 1014 of the charter, which requires the county executive to submit amendments to these plans that are sent to the council for approval. And I'll let Ms. Snyder or Ms. Blair comment on that after this. Second, this would actually strike at the opposite of what Mr. Pruski is trying to do, that this plan has gone through years of planning and the public input into this plan, and then this would defeat that purpose where the plan is then somehow amended at the last minute before that public process is completed. So, and I guess I'll reiterate again the point that I've made at the last council meetings on this bill, which is that we have been working for four years, I personally have been working for four years, in trying to make the dairy farm construction of ball fields possible. We've worked with our congressional delegation, who for three years told us that they were not willing to change the federal law, and the Navy was not willing to change the federal law to allow the construction of ball fields on this property, as they believe federal law says it must remain in rural nature, and this would not be rural nature. This year, Congressman Brown approached us about changing the, in the defense reauthorization bill, the language to allow for the Navy to sell this property, and the Navy is willing to sell this property to the county, a 40-acre parcel, based on what our plans are for this. We now have the support of the both senators and the congressional delegation to move forward with this. We have been communicating with their offices. We think this is our only opportunity, really, to actually build a ball field where we own the property. We will continue to lease the rest of the property, as we have agreed to for the 30 years. And if this purchase is to -- or the opportunity to purchase is to come forward, it would come before the council again, and we'd be more than willing to provide any input you have into this. But I guess I'll allow maybe Ms. Blair Klosmeyer and then Mr. Anthony to add to that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Blair.
Lori Blair Klosmeyer, deputy county attorney. The statute that governs this or requires this plan under state law is section 5905B of the Natural Resources Article of the State Code, and it says that a local governing body shall prepare a local land preservation, recreation plan, and submit it to the Department of Natural Resources and the Department of Planning for joint approval. And then there's a requirement that it be updated every five years, and this is one of the five-year updates. Under section 1014 of the charter, there's a provision that indicates that whenever state or federal law confers a power on the county by language that refers to the local governing body or similar language, any action required by the county shall be taken by the county executive and then referred to the county council for confirmation. So there's no ability to amend the plan. You have to -- you can either confirm the plan by voting it up, or you cannot confirm the plan by voting it down. But the plan itself cannot be amended under the charter.
Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
I would ask Ms. Tate to respond.
The bill says, "Upon approval and adoption by the county council, this supersedes the provisions of the Anaronda County 2013 Land Preservation Plan adopted by bill number 17." This plan is incorporated as part of this bill, and therefore, the council should have the opportunity to consider everything in the plan. There are many plans that are mandated by the state, and I think this might be the first time I've ever heard that it's an up or down vote when the plan comes to the council. It's part of the legislation, it's before the council, and therefore, the amendment is being offered. And the council, if they want to take the opinion, Ms. Blair, they can, and they can choose to vote it down if they agree with this amendment, and then have the administration bring back the plan without that language in it.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I also continue?
Sure. Yes, Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, I do want to get back to that folks have been working on this for four years. Well, if you talk to the community, they've heard zero for four years, and that's a problem that I have, is that if you don't have the neighbors and the residents involved, like anything we do on the council, that's an issue. Again, I'm not opposed to a purchase, but when you have no one not knowing the process, yes, it could back -- could come back in front of this council, but I might not be sitting here. And I have the vote right now of the people that I talked to, my constituency. In addition, we just passed a 30-year lease, and now we're trying to change it, and you just, on the record, have stated, "The Navy's not willing to sell." So I'm a little confused. It's a double-edged sword here. We're saying, on one hand, we're going to purchase it, and I would disagree with our congressional representatives all agreeing, because I've spoken to them, and some of them, you know, have said, "Yes," you've talked with them, others are ambivalent or really don't know and have concerns. So just to be clear for the record, you know, we need to make sure -- and I've said this to Rick when we met, that the Hammond's Connection Committee was started to have public input in this process, whether it's the purchase or the lease. That community group represents the area. There's people pointed to neighborhood community associations, other things. If they're not involved with the process, I don't want to purchase land or involve anyone that they just don't have any say. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond?
Mr. Marzick.
I said the Navy is willing. The Navy has supported the language that was put into the defense reauthorization that worked with Mr. Brown's office and Mr. Whitman's office, that they added this language in. Mr. Whitman, who is on the Board of Visitors for -- the chairman of the Board of Visitors for the Naval Academy, and they worked with the undersecretary of the Navy to get the support to purchase, or, excuse me, to sell this property to the county. So the Navy is supportive of this. But I'll defer to Mr. Anthony on the Hammond's Connection issue and the community input.
For the record, Rick Anthony, director of Recreation and Parks. First off, I just want to, if possible, kind of reiterate the purpose of this plan. I know we're really getting down into the weeds, really focused on the dairy farm. This plan is simply a guide. There's nothing that binds us. Every project that's in this plan will have not only a public process, but also the normal budgetary process. So it will be a -- there will be some input from the council and from the public for every plan. This is a guide that qualifies us for program open space, and it's already a year late. We have been issued several times warnings from the state that we need to get this plan in, and just due to, you know, other priorities, we have not gotten on track. So they have actually asked us, they've actually made some recommendations that if we do not get this plan approved, that we could possibly look at some of our FY '19 POS money being withheld. So that's the reason why we are -- we feel like we need to get this done today. Certainly, some of your concerns, Councilman Pruski, about the dairy farm, as I told you in a meeting, there has been absolutely no progress made, and that's one of the reasons why we want to at least find out the results of the NEPA. We want to at least explore the possibilities of purchasing the land. And absolutely, when we have some opportunity where we can say, "This is the direction we're pursuing," we intentionally plan to engage the public, we intentionally plan to do all of the outreach, bring back the Hammond's Connection Committee, and discuss the proposals. Nothing's set in stone. Everything that we've talked about are simply concepts at the moment. So I just, I kind of want to separate those two issues, that, you know, the plan is certainly something that is county-wide, it is a guiding document, and the main primary plan for this is that the state can bring together their land preservation plan, along with the county, assessing our needs. There was a tremendous amount of public input. We had online surveys, we had about 2,442 people that responded, we had focus group meetings, we put the -- we advertised in the Capitol and the Gazette and social media outlets. So I certainly know that there are some people that may have slipped through the cracks, but there was some public process in this plan. So I just kind of urge the council to approve this plan today, and certainly, let's deal with the dairy farm kind of as a separate issue.
Thank you. Can I ask a question before we -- Mr. Pruski? This also seems odd to me, and I have to agree with Ms. Tate. I don't remember being told in the past that there has to be an up and down vote like this. Ms. Blair, would you then say that if we voted, if we voted for this amendment and passed it, you would, in your opinion, it would just be annulity? It wouldn't have a legal effect?
It would certainly violate the charter, so I would have to say yes. And part of the issue, too, here is that if you look at this particular piece of legislation, there's about 10 whereas paragraphs that talks about all the process that this plan has been through and all the various agencies that have approved this plan. If there's any change to this plan, whether it be by the county executive, even if it's by the -- I'm sorry, even if it's by the county executive, this plan would have to go back through those approval processes. So that's kind of the issue that we're going to have if this, if there's some type of attempt to amend this plan.
Sure, but, and I appreciate that, and I'm --
But let me say, this is very -- I'm sorry. This is consistent with the advice that we have previously given when evaluating the term, the local governing body or local governing authority. It's an executive action with confirmation by the council. I think if you look back at some of the plans, like the investment plan that comes before, you know, anything that's mandated by state law and mandated with the language "local governing body," it may be that there's been other plans that don't use that language and that have come before you, and nothing comes to my mind immediately, but...
Right. Can you -- but with respect to this plan, Ms. Marzick, maybe you can do this. Can you just rehearse for us when we've seen, when we've had deliberation or any chance to deliberate for this until now?
To deliberate in the plan?
Yeah, to be, well, I mean, I think Mr. Pruski's point is, I don't mean to speak for him, but is that this particular plan has not had council input, and we're just getting a, we're getting a yes or no situation right now.
For the last two months, you've had this bill before you with the plan before you. So I would say for those eight weeks.
Okay, for this legislative period.
Right, to approve the plan. And I think to your question, you asked about a similar situation. I remember it was maybe two or three years ago, on the school chart, the council wasn't able to amend the school chart to be closed for one of the schools in Mr. Fink's district. We were required to resubmit a chart, closing that school, rather than have the council close that school in the school chart.
Okay.
For a similar situation where it's up or down for a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a teacher, I always used to say, "An emergency on your part is not one upon a mine." I have no idea why the plan is late. Certainly, I understand respect, but I am not going to sit here and have the residents that had no input at all, and as Mr. Sinclair pointed out, the advisory committee certainly has no one from West County, you know, is a big concern. And again, I would have done this the opposite way if I told you, Mr. Anthony, the Hammond's Connection Committee should have met, advised, and then obviously go forward. I don't like putting something out in a plan, even if it's just a concept. We have to be fair to people, and the plan originally, and I've seen actually, you know, pictures of it, or at least plans of having four fields, when you go to 12 and it butts neighbor, neighbors that have been there for years, that have grew up on that farm, that's a big issue. And again, that's my concern. I think we should call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Let me be quick. Ms. Blair, is, or to Mr. Anthony, is there any financial implications from this plan? Are there any resources tied to?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, the state does require for us to have this plan in order to continue to qualify for program open space.
I guess my, to be more explicit, is there, when we put this plan together, is there funding on our end, from a budgetary standpoint, that is applied to projects within the plan?
And that's what I mentioned before. Every project that we bring forward through this plan will have a normal budget procedure. So we have to introduce it into our capital budget. Again, well, that's opportunity for the council to approve or disapprove it.
And back to Ms. Blair, so this plan is simply a roadmap? That can change in the future?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. If there's nothing further, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Nay.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number two is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Then bill number 5818 as amended will be heard on September 4th, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6618.
Bill number 6618, an ordinance concerning deferred retirement option programs, fire service retirement plan, police service retirement plan, and detention officers and deputy sheriffs retirement plan.
Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. With me at the table, Ann Bukowski from Personnel, and Kelly Lovett from the office of law. Bill 6618 allows for all drop participants of the fire services retirement plan, except those in the classification of battalion chief, to earn interest in the sixth year of the drop. You may recall, similar legislation passed 5616, which allowed interest in the sixth year of the drop for drop participants of the police service retirement plan and the detention officers and deputy sheriffs retirement plan. This is an item that was negotiated with the union this year. We'd happy to answer any questions, council has.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Shire, do you have any comments?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Mike Shire, on behalf of the Pension Oversight Commission, I am here in support of bill 6618, on behalf of the Pension Oversight Commission. You have the memo from our commission, but just briefly, as we have in the past, we do support the bargaining processes, and the changes to the county code that this bill makes are as a result of those processes. Any rejection of those processes would undermine them as far as negotiating contracts for the bargaining units. Secondly, we all know that the county has had trouble retaining and hiring qualified firefighters. This provides an additional benefit to that end. The only issue that the Pension Oversight Commission had was the fiscal note that accompanied the legislation and the dearth of information that it provided as far as the financial impact. And finally, that the language of the section has become a little bit convoluted, and we just encourage the county council and the administration to continue with their process of updating the county code to fix those issues, and I would stand for any questions. of updating the county code to fix those issues, and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? If there's nothing further, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 6618. If anyone would like to testify on 6618, please come down at this time. Seeing the movement, we'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 6618. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6618.
Bill Number 6618, An Ordinance Concerning Deferred Retirement Option Programs, Fire Service Retirement Plan, Police Service Retirement Plan, and Detention Officers and Deputy Sheriff's Retirement Plan.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any discussion? Please call the roll on Bill Number 6618.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 6618 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 5118 as amended.
Bill Number 5118, An Ordinance Concerning Disposition of Real Property Transfer to Governmental Entities.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, Samantha Harris from Central Services, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. We have discussed this numerous meetings. This is the bill to allow the county to surplus property to government, other governments, and we would ask you to pass the bill tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 5118. If anyone would like to testify on Bill Number 5118, please come down at this time. Seeing the movement, we will, the public hearing on Bill Number 5118 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5118 as amended.
Bill Number 5118, An Ordinance Concerning Disposition of Real Property Transfer to Governmental Entities.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5118 as amended.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 5118 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, Susan Harold from Personnel, and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law. This is a bill we discussed at the prior council meeting that creates new titles and grades for several positions in the classified service, based on the just-passed budget. We would ask for your support of this bill.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? If not, then we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 6118. If there's anybody who would like to speak on 6118, please come forward at this time. Seeing the movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 6118 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6118 as amended.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 6118 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read the title of Bill Number 6518?
Bill Number 6518, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses, Swimming Pools, Personnel, and Safety Equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, Greg Swain from the Office of Law, and Don Kurcian from the Health Department. Bill 6518 seeks to align lifeguard requirements at health clubs with the current requirements that is in effect for hotels. Under certain circumstances, this bill would remove the requirement for a lifeguard to be present whenever a health club pool is open. Health clubs is defined as a health club or spa in Article 181101, would not be required to have a lifeguard present if the pool is less than 2,500 square feet, which is the same for pool hotels, the pool is less than five feet deep, which is the same for hotels, and the further requirement that the pool is only used by members and guests who are 18 or over. So we would ask for your support of this bill, and be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we know, what's the, what's the universe of facilities that this would affect?
Six.
Six in the whole county?
Yeah.
Okay. And they, they all meet the, the threshold of the depth or the square feet and everything?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And they currently, they all have actual lifeguards that are there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And this essentially makes them like the hotels.
Correct.
Except for that 18, 18-year-old requirement.
Don Kurdian from the Department of Health.
Thank you. Okay, nothing further. We will then open the public hearing on Bill Number 6518. If you have a sign-up sheet, Andrea Mansfield, and Chad, I'm sorry, Chad Abraamo.
Abraamo.
Please come on down.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Anaronda County Council. My name is Andrea Mansfield. I'm with Mans Canning and Associates. We're a lobbying firm here in Anaples, and we represent Fitness International, the owner operator of LA Fitness. And as you may know, LA Fitness has two clubs that they operate in Anaronda County. One is located in Gambros, and the other is located in Pasadena. And before making comments specifically to the merits of the bill, I did want to thank the administration for working with us on this legislation and for their support and providing information. As Mr. Marzick stated, this legislation achieves, seeks, achieves to seek parity with what's currently in place for the hotels and motels in Anaronda County. I do want to emphasize that all of the safety requirements that are in place for those pools, requiring someone that knows CPR, AED, and all the other equipment, still would need to be located at the pools, as well as an operator being on premise for those locations. So from my client's perspective and ours, we think this bill strikes, I guess, the important balance between ensuring safety for individuals that are 18 years and older that use the pools at these fitness clubs, but at the same time, removes financial barriers that are currently in place for clubs like LA Fitness to operate, and would allow them to maybe expand, improve the amenities at those clubs and so forth. But we would encourage your favorable support and passage of this legislation. Sitting next to me, as you mentioned, Chad Ambro. He's the Vice President with Fitness International. I think he's going to make a couple comments about the economic benefits of the clubs and this, what has changed, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mansfield, Mansfield, excuse me. Mr. Abraamo.
Good evening. My name's Chad Abraamo, and I'm Executive Vice President with LA Fitness. We currently operate 20 locations in the state of Maryland and 700 nationwide. Currently, less than 10% of our clubs around the country are required by local ordinance to have a lifeguard present. It currently costs a club operator about $100,000 a year to maintain a lifeguard during the hours that we have the pools open, and then we're either burdened with either having to restrict, dramatically restrict hours, or have the additional costs. We ask for your support on this bill. It requires us to maintain the same stringent safety requirements as Andrea stated. We currently already have somebody CPR certified, AED certified, first aid certified at the club, all hours the club is open. So what we would be adding in is CPO certified, which we have now through our lifeguards, we would have that through our current staff. So we would maintain that at all hours. This will allow us to operate safely and encourage us and other health clubs like us, either to build more clubs within the county and/or add the pool amenity to existing clubs. Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Just based upon the testimony, I want to disclose that my wife is a member. I'm no longer a member, so you don't have to worry about it, but I just wanted to get that on the record.
What can they do to get you back, Mr. Pruski?
We want you back.
I was, this gentleman to my left, we're discussing, I expected you to say that you had a facility in Millersville, but you said Pasadena, and then they were over there going, well, where is that? It's because it's over in Millersville.
If you had an option, Pasadena, where would you go?
Millersville, of course.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
A quick question. Obviously, the hotel bill was, was my bill. Are there any other sort of features in place, safety procedures in place? I know some of the hotels, they have like, you know, camera systems, things like that, just to make sure that no one's, is it control card? Obviously, if they gain access to the facility, they have their member, also they can't get in as well, but you do have sort of another set of eyes on the pool outside of the lifeguard. First of all, as far as maybe technology standpoint, or no?
No, not necessarily. In each club, we typically have the pool located right off of the lobby.
Yeah.
And so there is a direct line of vision from our front desk to the pool area. So we do, we do have that.
Check. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Well, I'm sorry, we're still in the public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to testify on this matter on Bill 6518? Please come forward at this time. Seeing the movement, we will now close the public hearing on Bill 6518. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6518.
Bill Number 6518, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses, Swimming Pools, Personnel, and Safety Equipment.
Any final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6518.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 6518 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 6718.
Bill Number 6718, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts, Lot Merge Religious Facilities.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Smith.
So just one, this is a, an activity we've been working on for probably better half of a year. There is an organization, a church, just to bring everyone up to speed, that is in Lythicum, that owns two parcels, and over the last year, these two parcels have had different governing language when it comes to use of these facilities. And so we tried to, several different procedures over the last year to give some sort of grandfather privileges, if you will, to the second parcel that is a house, so the church owns a house on the second lot, and they're subdivided. One has residential requirements, and the other one has sort of religious requirements that it operates. And so what the purpose of this effort was to, to join that house that the church owns with, with the church, so that they operate under the same sort of unified provisions. It literally is just this parcel that we're trying to affect. And we've had a number of different bills that have come up, on what was going to work, what wasn't. Last month, we withdrew a bill, or a couple months ago, we withdrew a bill because it had been amended so many times, and so this was a clean version of that. And hopefully, we can get this church back out of the gray area, so they can continue to use that house as a, basically an office space, an external, an extension of their religious services and meeting spaces that they have right now. So I would, I would ask your support on this bill, so we, this has literally been a year in the making, so we can finalize this process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, Lori Rose from Plan and Zoning, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We're supportive of the bill.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 6718. Anyone wishing to speak on Bill 6718, please come down at this time. Seeing the movement, we will close the public hearing on Bill Number 6718. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6718.
Bill Number 6718, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts, Lot Merge Religious Facilities.
Any final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6718.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
I'm sorry, here.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 6718 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number 1518.
Resolution Number 1518, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County Restricting the County Council to Increase the Minimum Value of Purchases and Contracts Requiring Full Competitive Bidding for $25,000 to an Amount Not Less Than $25,000 and Not Greater Than $50,000 or Greater Amount Determined by the County Council to be in the best interest of the county, and Requiring that the Award of Contracts Greater Than $5,000 and Less Than the Minimum Dollar Requirement for Full Competitive Bidding Shall be awarded through a simplified competitive process, except as otherwise provided by law, and Requiring that the county purchasing agent shall cause to be published on the Anaronda County website all awards of contracts through the full and simplified bidding process for capital improvements, contractual services, professional services, where supplies of $5,000 or greater awarded by the county in accordance with the Anaronda County Code.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, Andrew Heim and Christine Romans from Central Services, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. We've talked at length about this resolution at the last meeting. I actually thought this was held at the last hearing, and we're up for a vote, so we'll offer an amendment at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Right? Thank you. Is there any discussion? There is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment removes a provision allowing the county council to raise the minimum amount of a procurement requiring full competitive bidding above $50,000.
Motion to adopt?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is an amendment to address the issue that was raised, I think, by Mr. Trumbauer, Mr. Walker at the last meeting regarding, this removes the ability for the council to raise this number without going back to amend the charter, so they'd have to go back to the citizens for a vote, and this keeps the limit at $50,000. We would ask for your support of this amendment.
Thank you. So this, Mr. Marzick, this, so this keeps that decision of whether or not it will be changed again in the hands of the people?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other thoughts, discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Amendment Number One is adopted.
All right, so, do we vote? Do we vote on it? We proceed to vote on that. Madam Secretary, is there any further discussion on the bill? On, excuse me, on the resolution? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1518 as amended.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. I mean, I apologize, six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution Number 1518 as amended is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number 1818.
Resolution Number 1818, resolution proposing an amendment of the Charter of Anaronda County to eliminate the 1,500-hour per year limit for contractual temporary employees.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office with me at the table, Susan Harrell from Personnel, and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law. We would ask you to support this resolution and pass it tonight.
Thank you. Any discussion? There's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment restores the 15-hour limit for certain exempt temporary positions and adds an exception for persons employed by a fee-for-service enterprise of the county.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you can recall, during the original discussion on this, I was raising questions about part-time, full-time employees, and that is this a veiled attempt to obviously provide more private and contractual? Again, the testimony made sense in terms of parks and wrecks, and the childcare pieces, and of course, there's other, and the enterprise fund, but I think that this is a slippery slope if we allow the blanket limit to be removed. And certainly, I'd be open for, you know, further discussion, but I believe that this at least puts some parameters around something that could get out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we'd ask you to oppose this amendment for two reasons. First, this really undermines the purpose of the resolution, which is to provide flexibility to our departments. I sent around a list to those who had the questions last week of the departments that are potentially affected by this, aging, public works, police, IT, health, central services, fire, detention, all of those along with wreck and park. So, like I said, this amendment would really defeat the purpose of this. We're really trying to help our, and the second reason, we're really trying to help our public safety personnel to have the flexibility to work with these contractual employees where they can, and this would defeat that purpose by requiring it be the enterprise fund.
Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, again, I, this was brought forward with the childcare piece. We had great testimony. We certainly agree. And if we want to hire more police officers and firefighters, let's hire them full-time with benefits, and not part-time, in my opinion. And I think that we certainly could do that. And again, I think this is a slippery slope.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Anyone else? Mr. Marzick?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
No, I read the amendment. It's time to call the roll.
Please excuse me, Madam Secretary. You've done that. Please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Nay.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Then, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1818 as amended.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Nay.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Resolution 1818 is defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number 2018.
Resolution Number 2018, resolution proposing an amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to require that the county council to confirm by resolution the county executive's appointment of chief of police.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski? Mr. Marzick?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. We continue to oppose this resolution.
Is there any, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2018.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Nay.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Resolution 2018 is defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number 2218.
Resolution Number 2218, resolution approving submission of names for the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office with me at the table, or in the room, is Christine Nider from the Office of Law. Resolution 2218 approves the submission of names to the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board to fill the roles of regular member and alternate member. If approved, this list will be sent to the State Secretary of Appointments, Secretary Cavey. The nominees for the regular member position are incumbent Jeffrey Jefferson, Brian Metzbauer, and Maria Luna Baker. The nominees for the alternate member are the incumbent Raymond Frederick, John Atkins, and Rocco Ferretti. You should have the resumes before you. We ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Are there any questions? Madam Secretary, oh, excuse me. We will open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2218. Anybody who desires to testify on Resolution 2218, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 2218 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2218.
Resolution Number 2218, resolution approving submission of names for the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board.
Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2218.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2218 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number 2318.
Resolution Number 2318, resolution approving estimates of the annual cost of providing health insurance benefits and the employer subsidies used to determine the rates for certain participants under the county employee and retiree health benefits program.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office with me at the table, Ann Bukowski and Doug Hart from Personnel, and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law. Set forth in the code, Resolution 2318 is the annual approval of the cost estimates and the employer, and employee, excuse me, the cost estimates and the employee employee subsidy for each of the health plans offered to our county employees and retirees. All employees under the age of 65, I'm sorry, all employees and retirees under age 65 will see a 1% reduction in their premium for calendar year 2019. Retirees over the age of 65 will see a slight reduction in their premium as well. The Office of Personnel is able to make this reduction due to relatively flat claims year, improved total care management of the vendors, and savings from performing a pharmacy market check. Ms. Bukowski and Mr. Hart be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marzick, we do not bundle our health insurance with Board of Ed, right? Are they completely separate? Completely separate. Are, are the trends that we're, are the trends we're seeing in, in these rates, are they consistent with what the Board of Ed is generally seeing? Are you familiar with their system over there?
I understand, Ann Bukowski, Office of Personnel, I understand from our consultant Aon that they are consistent.
Okay.
The claims are, trends are consistent between both employers.
Okay. And so, I hear you guys saying, and I think there was a reference in the blue letter, that there may be some, some savings in the second half of FY19. And do you, do you anticipate that, that rates for our county employees and retirees and, I mean, are they, are they fairly stabilized? Because all I hear on the news is about how health insurance is going up and up and up, and I can tell you, my health insurance goes up and up and up. So, I'm just curious, if the county has cracked the code on how to do this, why don't we share it with the world?
It is really based on how the claims year go each year.
We just hire really healthy people?
I'd like to believe that. The younger workforce is a healthier workforce, and our retiree rates are probably, while they leveled off this year, have, as you may recall from last year, were significantly increased from 16 to 17.
Okay. Well, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, we're all trying to fire, file, or follow Mr. Fink's diet. That's why.
That's right.
The claims are going down.
That's right. All right. Were we about to open the public hearing? Did we do that already? Thank you. Thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution 20, where are we, 2318? Anybody wishing to testify on 2318, please come down at this time. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2318. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2318.
Resolution Number 2318, resolution approving estimates of the annual cost of providing health insurance benefits and the employer subsidies used to determine the rates for certain participants under the county employee and retiree health benefits program.
Any final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2318.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2318 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number 2418.
Resolution Number 2418, resolution proposing an amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to require that the county auditor receive a copy of any report related to employee theft of, or fraud in the county government, and to permit the county auditor to inspect the records relating to the report, and forward any exception to, to the findings of the fraud investigation to the county council and the county executive.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I've introduced this resolution is that I received contact from a number of employees in the county related to a specific situation where an employee used their credit card, their government-issued credit card, to purchase items for personal use. And I understand at that point, and it was after the fact, it was actually while the county auditor's office was already undergoing an audit of the P-cards here in the county, that this employee, well, the council first of all wasn't made aware of it, nor was the auditor's office. And the, as we all know, the auditor is, does report to the council, but is considered in the charter the watchdog over the county finances and county spending of taxpayer dollars. And so, the situation apparently evolved where the individual was allowed to resign from the position. There were no charges pressed or filed, as I understand it, and in exchange for returning the items. So, I don't know if, I don't know to what extent the administration investigated this, but I do understand that employees that were, that were talked to about this, some of which the administration knew who they were, other ones that they did not, in fact, the administration asked them to sign non-disclosure agreements related to their knowledge of the misuse of this card. So, that to me was a problem, and so, I thought I'd add this to the charter as an issue of transparency, so that if there is a situation that arises where there is fraud or misuse of government resources, in particular taxpayer dollars, that there be an additional set of eyes from the auditor's office looking over these transactions and these situations to make sure that proper investigation is performed. I realize that the auditor doesn't, there's no requirement in the charters, I understand it, that the auditor's office have certified fraud, be a certified fraud examiner, but in fact, we have had that. Over the past couple of years, we've had auditors that have the designation of being a certified fraud examiner. And so, anyway, I just, you know, the concern that I have is that there are, the possibility for transactions to be conducted and then kind of brushed over and ignored. And I think that the auditor should have the ability to research these documents, to look at the transactions, to understand what took place, and also to see if there's a pattern of this type of behavior in other areas. So, that's why I'm putting this forward, and I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the County Executive's Office with me at the table now, Kelly Lovett and Lori Blair from the Office of Law, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. We already comply with this provision that Mr. Walker is proposing and put in the charter, and if you want to put this in the charter, we'd be happy to support it.
All right. Is there any, any other questions? If not, we will open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2418. If anyone would like to speak on 2418, please come down at this time. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Julie Johnson, PO Box 5634, Annapolis, Maryland. I would like to speak in support of this bill. I have never been a county employee, but I was employed by the Board of Education. I've testified to you in the past about the things that I think were really unconscionable and were really seriously wrong. First of all, as a classroom teacher, I had a department chairman who refused to allow any expenditure of books for my students year after year. Books, 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 you want books for your students, you want books for your students, but you buy them yourself, not out of my money, excuse me, not out of the school's money. There was another incident that was a significant amount of money that I know about. She assigned me, the department chairman assigned me to clean out a really, a very large stockroom and to complete part of the inventory. On the high reaches in the back, you know, really hard to get to, I found a desk-covered box that contained a, it contained a scientific clock. The purchase order, it wasn't on the inventory. So, I took the purchase, I took the box down to the front office. According to that purchase order, it was specimens for students to dissect, frogs, sharks, fetal pigs, and all kinds of really cool stuff. But these weren't just, you know, the run-of-the-mill. These were doubly injected. And for biology teachers, those are really cool, because you get red latex or pink latex in, you know, in the arteries, and blue latex in the veins. So, it really helps students, and they get excited. I mean, these are really great things. But the problem is, those materials were never delivered. Instead, the clock was delivered. And the problem also is complicated, because once you chop up, you know, once you dissect the creatures, you know, the pieces go in the garbage, and there's no evidence.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I have to interrupt the story. Thank you very much. Mr. Pittman, good evening.
Yes. It's on. Okay, thank you. I actually signed up to testify on the next resolution, but they're so closely related that I thought I would jump in here. What? Stuart Pittman, 440 Doden Road, Davidsonville, Maryland. And I have some written testimony that I'll read. So, as a taxpayers, taxpayer of this county, I am asking each of you to give voters the opportunity to be heard on this fiscal oversight proposals set forth in Resolutions 24 and 2618. Allowing the auditor to investigate waste and fraud throughout county government is good for taxpayers, and requiring that the executive report theft and fraud to the auditor is common sense. I'm glad to hear that the county executive is not opposing this Resolution 24. Our county charter gives extraordinary power to the Office of County Executive, but you were elected by voters to balance that power. You have every right to invite the voters to weigh in on proposals that reform government processes, and you have done it before. Voters overwhelmingly approved a charter amendment that was placed in the 2016 ballot requiring the county executive to hold two budget hearings before introducing a budget. County Executive Shu asked you to oppose that resolution, but you supported it, so I want to thank you for that in 2016. But don't make this vote about Steve Shu. We don't know who's going to be county executive in the future. We don't know how many of you are going to be on this, taxpayers are going to be county council representatives. Two of our first seven county executives were jailed for abusing power of the office. A third became so arrogant that he was dubbed King John and dethroned in a landslide led by a little-known Democrat from a South County farm family. Our county auditors have done outstanding work for you, cutting the fat out of county budgets, allowing you to transfer the money to education in recent years. And I think that allowing the county auditor to have more powers to be able to review every part of county government is good for the taxpayers, and just putting this on the
Andrew Chase, One St. Andrews, Garth, Severna Park, Maryland. I just want to point out that it's a very rare and very special day where we have Steve Shu, Jerry Walker, and Stuart Pittman all supporting the same issue, so I think that's very important for this county. I think this amendment is a common sense solution that will help just guarantee that we don't have any corruption in this county. Really, there's not much of a strong argument that we shouldn't have more transparency whenever an issue arises with fraudulent spending by county employees. And I also think it's important to note that when the county councilman from New York City says that we need to fix our corruption, I think it's important that we listen to that, because he must have experience from where he's from. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will now close the public hearing on Resolution 2418. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2418.
Resolution Number 2418, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to Require the County Auditor to Receive a Copy of Any Report Related to Employee Theft, Fraud, or Fraud in the County Government, and to Permit the County Auditor to Inspect the Records Relating to the Report and Forward Any Exception to the Findings of the Fraud Investigation to the County Council and the County Executive.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any final discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
I would just like to ask Madam Auditor for her comments on the resolution, and in particular, on Mr. Marzick's statement that the administration already complies with this, the intent of this resolution.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm very happy to hear Mr. Marzick say that the administration does not oppose this resolution. It hasn't been our experience that we receive reports of theft and fraud from the administration. So, we'll be very happy if this passes and goes out to the voters, and the voters enact it, that we will receive these reports. I just also want to point out that the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, of which four of us are certified fraud examiners in the auditor's office, has indicated that organizations that do not have good communication between the departments, that do not have good checks and balances, and don't have good indicators of fraud and risk, which this would be, are very vulnerable to fraud in their organizations. So, I think this will only help to improve the county operations and help to make the operations more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Anything further, Mr. Walker?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2418.
Can I just read?
Did I already ask you to do that? Let's do it again.
I just, I read it, sir. I think we're ready to call the roll.
That's right. Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 2418.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasser.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seventy affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution 2418 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read the title of Resolution Number 1918?
19?
26.
26. Resolution Number 26.
What did I just say?
Okay.
Sorry about that. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2618.
I will. Resolution Number 2618, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to Amend the Anaronda County Charter to Add Additional Duties to the Provisions Related to the County Auditor to Provide for Financial and Performance Audits of Any Office, Department, or Agency Funded in Whole or in Part by County Funds, and to Permit the County Auditor to Review All Records Maintained by All Officers, Agents, and Employees of the County, and All Offices, Departments, Institutions, Boards, Commissions, Courts, Corporations, and Other Agencies to the Extent Necessary for the Conduct of Their Duties, and to Provide Authority to Conduct a Separate Investigation of an Act or Allegation of Fraud, Waste, or Abuse in the Obligation, Expenditure, Receipt, or Use of County Resources.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am actually going to turn this over to Madam Auditor. The concept of this resolution was generated through the auditor's office. It was a request that we consider this change to the charter based on experiences that they had, and that this language was drafted, as I understand it, the concepts and language were drafted by the former auditor and as well as our current auditor. So, I'm going to turn it over to her to describe why they feel like this would be something that would be beneficial for their office, to perform their duties. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Dickinson and I worked on drafting this resolution, and I want to point out a couple of things. There's been some inaccuracies reported. Although this is making some additions to the charter, it is not changing our duties. We have been performing performance audits dating back to at least 2004. If we receive an allegation of fraud, waste, or abuse, we investigate that allegation. If it is substantiated, we report it to the county council and the county executive. The thing that has changed, that has caused us to want to bring this charter to the council and to the voters, is that in the last few years, the administration, specifically the Office of Law, has interpreted the charter and the auditor's duties very narrowly, so that many areas that we would like to audit or try to audit, we are limited in our ability to access certain records. We have also, our audits have been impeded by pushback to talk to employees, just a number of different things. We've been told we can't audit procurement. These are things that are standard across the country. The language that was put in this resolution is very mild. If it was entirely up to me, it would be much stronger. I've been a government auditor for over 30 years. I worked for the state audit office for 22 years, and the language in the state law is very strong. The executive must provide access to records to the auditors. There is a penalty in the state code for those auditors, for the agency, if they do not provide the records. And it just is good government. It provides accountability and transparency to the operations of the government. It's not clear to me why the administration would oppose this. This, similar to 2418, is only providing good public policy. If you don't want an audit function, that, to me, would be somewhat questionable, why that would be. If you do want an audit function in this county, then you need to give us the tools and the resources that we need to perform our duties. Thank you.
Madam Auditor, in your analysis and from listening to what you just said, are you contemplating, or would you contemplate, an increasing staff to do? Or are you seeing, are you contemplating increasing duties, increasing volume?
We would love more bodies, but no, we're not considering that at this point. We've asked for one position in the last budget cycle, and we'll be hiring that person, but other than that, no.
Thank you. Any other?
Mr. Chair.
Question, Mr. Walker.
To sort of expand on what Mr. Chairman's question, and to kind of go back to maybe what you said in your statement, your office prior to this administration was already doing what you're asking to do, to be done, to allow you to do in this resolution. Is that correct?
That's correct. We did not have the difficulty that we have now accessing the records and speaking to employees that we are currently experiencing, and it's gotten to the point on one of our audits that we feel that it's seriously impacted the audit.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
Thank you. The Madam Auditor, the investigation piece, why would you feel that the auditor is more experienced and better to investigate than the police department on something like fraud?
If we receive an allegation of fraud, I have myself and three other employees are certified fraud examiners. If we substantiate an allegation of fraud, we would, of course, refer that to the police department or some other legal entity. We are not prosecutors, but by nature and the industry of the audit function, it is typical in the auditor's office or the inspector general's office, in the federal government, in the state government, and in the jurisdictions across Maryland to perform that function.
In the P. Card case that Mr. Walker mentioned, I think it was Mr. Walker mentioned that, was that something investigated by the police department?
It may have. I do not have the specific information on that.
All right. Thank you.
Any, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Council Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. We are opposed to this resolution. Would I ask you to vote against it?
Thank you. Any further, Mr. Smith?
Could the administration explicit, I mean, expand on why they're opposed to it?
Sure. I think this is another attempt by Mr. Walker to have a power grab from the executive branch and expand the power of the county council.
Is that why you're opposed, because you assume that it's Mr. Walker's effort?
His resolution with the Democrats. It's Mr. Walker and a Democrat's resolution. It's not our resolution. It's...
Order, 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 order. Mr. Marzick. No, no, no. Questions asked, questions answered. Next question.
The reality was, several months ago, when we talked about the Office of Law, it certainly is not my anticipation to sort of push any undue sort of pressure on the administration to provide more. This is something we've been talking about for years, quite frankly, or months, either with the narrow views of the Office of Law, or, hell, I just spoke to the county executive earlier today about how I still don't believe that the Office of Law can represent both of these bodies fairly. That's my opinion. I'll go to the grave believing that, because I just don't believe that. But the auditor staff brought this up months ago. I certainly didn't sit down and say, "Auditor, can you send me something that, you know, makes it harder for the administration to do their job?" Never once did I ever do anything like that. And in fact, I feel like I've been very fair to the administration. I just thought it was prudent. Obviously, I worked in the federal government on the financial side of the House, and auditors do have a lot of autonomy when it comes to actually looking at financial crimes and things like that, or fraud, waste, and abuse. But I can tell you from my intent, it was never, ever, ever done with the intent to make it more challenging for the administration, or because I didn't like Steve Shu or any other thing like that. That, you have my word on, and I'll take that to my grave. This was done because I, in my mind, I signed up because I thought it was a smart thing to do, so that they had the ability to actually receive information. Whether it's this bill or a more cooperative sort of staff to the auditor staff, I didn't care. I just wanted us to be able to do the job, and so that's certainly why I did it. It was not because Mr. Walker came to me and said, "Hey, here's something that screwed the county executive." Well, on my kids, that has never, ever happened in any of our conversations, and so I don't want you to assume that that was the reason, because it really is not, really is not. But I'll leave at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Can I return, Madam Auditor, to this measure includes performance audits. Can you give, just give me an example, I know I'm asking off the top of your head, of a performance audit that you would like to do, that you're prevented from doing now because of the narrow...
We would like to do a procurement audit. We've been told that we cannot audit procurement, because it doesn't specifically relate to the expenditure of funds. Most of our audits are procurement audits, and they can have various objectives. The performance audits that we typically do relate to the internal controls over a certain function, but there can be performance audits that pertain to the efficiency or effectiveness of an operation, or compliance with laws and regulations. There's, you know, there's a number of different areas that can be done.
That sounds rather broad to me, and that's why I asked the question earlier about staffing. It's, it, so, I'm just going to use an example. Suppose that the police department is committed to community policing to a certain extent, and would you develop some parameters or some standard by which you would judge how effectively they've done that thing?
When we do a performance audit, we typically measure the department's actions in terms of existing law and regulations and their policies. We're not creating the criteria. We would use the criteria that the departments have established.
Do you now do, on a rotating basis, do the various departments, audit the various departments?
No, we do not have enough staff to do it on a rotating basis. Unfortunately, there are some departments that haven't been audited in quite some time.
And the budget is audited by an outside firm, is that right? The county...
You mean the financial statement audit?
Yes.
Yes, the auditor, along with the controller, contracts with an independent firm to perform the financial statement audit. Up to maybe 2010, it was done in conjunction with the auditor's office. After that, I think the firm has done it on their, you know, independently.
Okay, thank you. Let me do, Mr. Fink first.
Because you touched on that last audit. Why is that? Is that normal? Does the state do the same thing with hiring an outside contractor to handle that?
Yes.
I've always wondered that. And why were we, you said before 2010, we were not doing that?
Up till 2010, we participated in the audit process. We did some of the work. The problem was it took up so much of our resources, it didn't give us time to do other audits.
Okay.
And I believe that Teresa spoke with the council, and it was agreed that we would step back on it.
And is there a reason why the auditor's office doesn't do that whole thing themselves? Is there something to, trying to keep it to its own pieces?
I really don't know what the original reason was. It would take a great amount of resources and expertise to do it.
But there's no reason. I mean, it could be done in-house with the auditor's office, assuming we had another 10 auditors, or whatever the case is.
It's possible.
Or if we prioritize that and said that's the most important thing.
It could be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski.
Madam Auditor, how many years have you been doing audit functions, again?
I've been a government auditor for 32 years.
Okay. Has anybody ever asked you, whether Republican or Democrat, to do an investigation based upon political purposes?
No. I pride myself and my staff as well in as being nonpartisan. We stay out of the fray of the politics. We're just trying to do our jobs.
Okay. And also, a follow-up question in regards to the audit. That also includes council members and the council office. Am I correct?
I'm not following you.
So, if there were an audit of the council member misappropriation of funds, or council staff, that includes us as a body?
That's possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I was going to ask a question to the chairman, because he had raised a concern about the performance, specific language, and was that word giving the chairman pause when you had raised it earlier? I think you had asked a question earlier about the...
Myself?
Yes.
Up until a couple of weeks ago, I never, ever heard the term "performance audit" before, so I was, I've been kind of struggling with what it means and how broad that is.
Thank you.
That was why I asked.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Madam Auditor, since the allegation was made that this is generated by me, would you mind putting on the record who this was generated by and how we came to this point?
Ms. Dickinson and I drafted this resolution with the help of Ms. Tate, and we also ran the wording by the law office, and the reason for it is simply because of the narrow interpretation by the Office of Law that has been impeding our ability to perform our audits.
And did I in any way ask you to do that?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Lori, this player, excuse me.
There's been multiple comments about the narrow nature of the opinion of the Office of Law, and I'm the one who wrote it, so I thought maybe I could maybe defend my opinion.
Please.
I was interpreting the language that is in the charter. Ms. Dickinson and I, when she was here, came to an agreement of what the, basically, nine or 10 parts of this charter provision currently are. They're, and we both also agree that this is not the best-written charter provision in the world. But basically, what it left me with, when you break it down, is that the auditor's duties all relate back somehow to finances, to the expenditure of funds, the income of funds, where the funds are, that sort of thing. I think what, and I will say, I think what Ms. Clancy is saying is that they do audit procurement contracts, and I think she'll admit to that. The contracts are looked at, they audit them, they make sure the amount that's charged, that the amount that comes in. There is a financial audit. I think what she's talking about is making sure that they follow the purchasing manual, or something of that nature. But I, in coming to my opinion, I was interpreting the languages that's here, and I can't broaden the language that's in the charter. I can only interpret what is here, and I think that that, I just want to say, I did not purposely in any way narrowly interpret the charter. We're kind of stuck with the language of the framers from 50, more than 50 years ago. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Ma'am, may I ask, you just moved to the front of the room.
I have experience...
I'm sorry, ma'am. May I ask you to return to your seat for just a moment? I'll open the public hearing in a little while, okay?
Great. You won't forget.
I won't forget. I guess I won't.
Nobody will.
Well, let's, why don't we do that now? Let's open the public hearing.
Oh, boy. Do you have signups?
We have, we have signups. Mr. Stuart Pittman.
Still at 440 Doden Road, Davidsonville, Maryland. I spoke to this already, so I won't say anymore, other than that I strongly encourage all of you to vote together on this. I think this is not a partisan issue, and it's not about any one person. It's about the future of how the auditor's office works in Anaronda County.
Thank you, sir. Let's start with Ms. Johnson, from left to right here, my left.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I certainly also really strongly... I certainly also really strongly support this particular resolution. And just to speak about performance audits, because that might not be something that the average person thinks of in terms of a real need. And likewise, most people may not think about the courts, but everybody knows if you get a traffic ticket, you know, you have to have police officers and courts and bailiffs and judges, and there's time consumed and money, and therefore money consumed. And we have a problem in, at least in my personal experience, I saw incredible problems. Here's a person with, you know, forty dollars or fifty-dollar parking tickets, and these tickets were issued in August of '04, and I think we finally buried the last of them in 2008 with the delay, you know, with one of the most expensive or most prestigious real estate firms defending against a fifty-dollar parking ticket. But it happened. In '99 to 2003, again, a small case. 2003 case lasted, well, into 2007 or '08. Yet another one from 2007 lasted into 2011. A different one originated in the circuit court in August of 2007. It went well into 2009 with two thousand pages of court documents. And the judge, an opposing counsel, joked about the importance of conservation of judicial resources. There is a tremendous abuse of consumption of time and office space and help. I mean, these are tremendously expensive things. So this is a very important thing, and I focused only on one to make it, you know, more concrete for some people.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ma'am?
Thank you. I'm CJ Muschaw from 384 Pondre Drive, Water, Maryland, 21037. Thank you, and thank you for the exercise. I wanted to offer, for the performance question, my office, actually, we do regular and routine internal audits, and then we do external audits, and they're based on regular standard operating procedures. So the word "performance," I can understand why that could be alarming, but really, it's just to make sure that you're doing what you say you're doing, and that you've established standard operating procedures to say what you are supposed to be doing. So it's kind of like you competing with yourself. So in theory, it should be a very normal and helpful standard thing for folks.
Thank you.
They have international ISO standards for audits such as these as well, and it's nothing just regulated to finance. Finance is almost always its own separate thing. So to relegate audits just to finance is a little scary.
Thank you, Ms. Muschaw. Appreciate that.
Yes. My name is Marguerite Morris. It's on, thank you. And I reside at 701 Harvest Run Drive, Odenton, Maryland. I wanted to address this, because you all got a handout tonight, and I'm not sure you've all had a chance to review it, and it happens to be entitled, coincidentally, "One Mother's Battle for Truth, Transparency, and Accountability in a Troubled Government System." So it's all about this. You should start with the auditor. You should include the same level of transparency in all areas of county government because of the possible residual effects of corruption, possibly from Tier Leopold, et cetera. The county currently, independently, is currently facing three major lawsuits because of transparency allegations, all circulating around one agency, because there are no proper checks and balances on their performance. Anything with greater transparency will definitely help this county and is necessary. I would hope that you will endorse, examine, and expand upon these things that are before you, because whether or not we want to say this is make-believe, or we don't understand the true impact on the citizens of the county, I assure you that your incumbents and anyone coming in will, are now going to have to look at those lawsuits, where they came from. If they're dismissed, they're going to circulate back to you, and they are a problem, because one agency is doing their own thing, and there are not proper checks and balances in place. So please, anything that expands the accountability, the transparency for the government, and Marguerite Morris is not by herself anymore, there are a number of citizens that are starting to come forth over these issues, we would really appreciate your looking into them independently. If you're questioning what I'm saying, then take a look at this handout. It's not made-up stuff from a mommy. It's made-up facts that are going on in your county now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now close the public hearing on Resolution 2618. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2618.
Resolution number 2618, Resolution proposing an amendment to the charter, excuse me, of Anaronda County, to amend the Anaronda County Charter to add additional duties to the provisions related to the county auditor, to provide for financial and performance audits of any office, department, or agency funded in whole or in part by county funds, and to permit the county auditor to review all records maintained by officers, agents, and employees of the county, and all offices, departments, institutions, boards, commissions, courts, corporations, and other agencies to the extent necessary for the conduct of their duties, and to provide authority to conduct a separate investigation of an act or allegation of fraud, waste, or abuse in the obligation expenditure, receipt, or use of county resources.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any further discussion?
Mr.?
Mr. Smith?
Just, you know, just listening to the, well, the public testimony and the previous comments, you know, it's hard to not let go and that the politics of Washington, if you will, is finding and seeping its way, even in the politics of Annapolis, specifically on the county and local level. And it's just sad that even the seven of us, we have different philosophical views, but all of us should be unified in the execution of our duties and our job. But even, we're fallible. We're humans, and we subject ourselves to the politics of leading instead of just governing. And it just breaks my heart that even on resolutions like this, that potentially could be tweaked to address concerns of the administration, but it becomes us versus them, instead of the citizens of Anaronda County. And that's what really sort of saddens me about, you know, some of the issues that we're facing today, that the seven of us can't even agree, or potentially, I guess we'll see here in a moment, where good government is transparent government. And, you know, I've worked on the Fort Meade side of the House, where every couple of years, someone is investigating me. They open up a single-scope background investigation, where I open up my financials, and they look at everything. But I'm not afraid of it, because I have nothing to hide, and I know that I'm always going to try to do the right thing, no matter what. You know, when we get to that point as a county, where it doesn't matter what politics, what party, Democrat or Republican, that we're just going to do the right thing, even if we disagree on what the outcome is, that's when we know we're going to make it as a county. But if we live in this paranoid state of someone's always out to get us, and we're always working against each other, then we're never going to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Anaronda County. So, thank you.
Mr. Smith, I appreciate your remark, and would, it wasn't a motion, but I'll second it anyway. For my part, I have appreciated the collegiality of, that I've had with you and my other colleagues here on the dais. I have appreciated it very much, and we have disagreed about many things, but I have appreciated the collegiality and the goodwill that has been here. So I wanted to just use the opportunity, since you said that, to make that remark.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Auditor?
I just wanted to go back and address Mr. Fink's question again regarding the police investigation of any fraud, indication of fraud or abuse. In my experience, when I worked at the State Office of Legislative Audits, it was not unusual. In fact, it was our, it was commonplace that the auditors would perform an investigation, and if it appeared that fraud had occurred, because only a court can say whether it did or not, we would work with the Criminal Investigation Division of the Attorney General's Office to follow up and prosecute whoever the perpetrator was. So it's not like we are saying that we can do all of this on our own. We recognize that law enforcement, at some point, if it's established, has to get involved.
Okay. If there's nothing further, Madam Secretary, please, you read the title, please call the roll on Resolution 2618.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Nay.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Peruca?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Resolution 2618 is defeated.
One other piece of business that we didn't do earlier in the evening is to welcome our new auditor, so I'd like to welcome the new auditor. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to be, is there any other business to be brought for the county council?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until September 4th, 2018.